Lord, grant to us this day that by your holy inspiration, we may think that things are right and by your merciful guiding accomplish them. Be with this board on this day and guide them so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen of this community. In your holy name we ask this, amen.
Dr. Litz, to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his will, with liberty and justice for all.
You've all had a chance to review the minutes of 312 and 422. What's your pleasure? Motion approved?
Support.
Motion of support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Citizen input. Anyone from the audience wish to address? The Bay County Board of Commissioners, now is your chance. Hearing none, we'll move on to petitions and communications. We've got a full schedule today. First, we have the Handy Middle School Unified Champions Basketball Team. Resolution 2019-62, entertain a motion.
Someone? Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Before I have the clerk read the resolution, I'd just like to let everyone know how this happened. I got an email from Andy Kowalczek, your principal up there at Handy. And when I was on the school board at Pinconning, he was an administrator there. And also a Pinconning Spartan graduate. Thank you for bringing that forward, Andy. Okay, clerk, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution 2019-62 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive wish to honor the Handy Middle School's Unified Champions Basketball Team on securing the 2019 state championship in Lansing, Michigan. And whereas, Handy Middle School has been a Unified Champion School for the past three years, starting with thirty kids the first year and now in the third year having one-hundred-and-eighty children attending the events. Whereas, the Handy Middle School Unified Champions Program emphasizes acceptance, inclusion, compassion, collaboration, decency, and respect, lifelong skills for students to develop and applies they go forward in life to become future great leaders. And whereas, the Handy Middle School Unified Champions Program arranges a variety of activities and events throughout the year, and the program has been recognized by area media. And whereas, participation sports include track and field, basketball and volleyball, and the Handy Middle School Unified Champions competed at the state level for basketball and this year won its second state championship title. Whereas, the basketball team partners, general education students, have been recognized by many other unified groups as well as the Michigan Special Olympics area directors recognizing their leadership skills both on and off the court. Whereas, the Handy Middle School Unified Champions participates in tournaments at both the district and state levels. Half the team is made up of general education students and the other half are students with a variety of disabilities. The general education partners with sport restrictions provide assistance to those with disability through teamwork. Whereas, coaches Nicole Harsonal, Kathy Welch, Angela Salinas, Carrie Mason, and Joanne Weiss led their team, providing support and encouragement and instilling in the squad a sense of fair play and a commitment to strive to be the best that they could be throughout the year, culminating in winning the state championship. Whereas, team members Carlos Harris, Demarian McClendon, Cameron Washington, LJ McCullough, Trayvon Campbell, Xavier Cruz, Austin Comer, Connor Pinter, Thomas Atkins, Gavin McKenzie, Todd Jelani, and Richard Lambman, with team spirit and sportsmanship honored themselves, their coaches, their school, their parents, and our community as the 2019 Unified Schools State Champions. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive commend the Handy Middle School Unified Champions and their coaches for their hard work, dedication, passion, and commitment to excellence and extend congratulations on securing the 2019 state championship title for the second time. Bay County is proud of your achievement. Sign Michael Durant check chair and the board.
All right, if we can have the team come up here, please. Coaches. Come on, Andy.
All right.
Are we on here? Should be. Chest.
Wait, wait, wait.
Lord, if you come back, you're going to find a spot.
Do you have the members of the team stuff ready?
He's going to want to put them all there.
Oh, okay.
Coaches.
Here. Yes, you're all looking alike.
If you want to take some pictures, you could come right up behind here. It's not a problem. Right, James?
On behalf, obviously, as the resolution says, at the Bay County Board of Commissioners, this is really something to have a state champion and for what you guys do. Thank you very much.
We did it.
I guess we got started back when Mr. Dufresne was there at Handy. And I just got called to the office one day and they asked me to start this program through Special Olympics. So it started out small and then with the help of our general teachers, we've built it over the past three years. But it really unifies our special ed kids. I work for the ISD now, so our special ed kids and our general education students. And our school really has changed. Like at lunch, they sit together, you know, and in the hallways, these kids are giving them high fives and it just really touches my heart how great these kids are. So you hear about Unified Champions, it's through Special Olympics and come to any event that you're willing to come to. So it's a great program.
call for a vote. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. If we did, we did it twice. That's fine. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Michigan Green Schools Resolution 2019-63. I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Someone? Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carried. I'm going to have Alicia come up and do just a real brief synopsis of what Green School's all about.
Okay, the Michigan Green Schools Initiative is a statewide initiative to recognize both public and private schools for the work they do to encourage, to foster environmental stewardship and energy conservation and recycling. And the school has to submit, most schools do a lot of these things anyway. It's a way to recognize them for all the things they're already doing. They all have paper recycling programs and toner recycling programs. Some of them even have food waste from the cafeteria recycling programs. They all do energy programs that partner with Consumers Energy and other agencies. They local, they partner with local, you know, the different state park and different environmental agencies to provide information about environmental stewardship and conserving the wildlife and how to properly be good stewards of our land. And so they do a lot of different activities. There's three different levels. There's the Emerald, the Evergreen level, which is they have twenty points that they've put forward that recognize and that do all these activities. And or they can be an Emerald and that means they put fifteen points. We actually have one school that did that and six schools that are Evergreen schools this year. And one school that put down, put out ten and they are a Michigan Green School. And so this is an award. They receive a flag that they can fly either in the school or outside. They'll receive a patch, which isn't, didn't come in yet. And they receive a certificate signed by the governor and Mr. Barsha, recognizing all of their, the hard work that they do to foster good stewardship of our land and resources.
Thank you very much. I will have the clerk read the resolution.
Resolution 2019-63 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, in 2010, the Bay County Board of Commissioners approved participation in the Michigan Green School Initiative, which grants Michigan Green School designation to any public or private school in Michigan that meets certain criteria. Whereas, in 2012, the Board of Commissioners approved continued participation in this program, with administration of the program being provided by Alicia Wallace through the Department of Environmental Affairs and Community Development. Whereas, this year's Michigan Green School applications have been received from Auburn Area Catholic Schools, Bayernet ISD Career Center, John Glenn High School, State Street Academy, Banger Lincoln Elementary School, Banger Central Elementary School, Bayernet Community High School, and Bush Elementary School, all meeting the requirements outlined by the Act to qualify as a Michigan Green School. Banger Central Elementary School, Bayernet Community High School, and Bush Elementary are the first-time participants. And whereas, six schools, Auburn Area Catholic School, Bayernet ISD Career Center, John Glenn High School, State Street Academy, Banger Lincoln Elementary School, and Banger Central submitted twenty or more points and met the criteria to be awarded the Evergreen Level Michigan School Designation. Whereas, the Bayernet Community High School submitted fifteen points and meets the requirements to be awarded the Emerald Green Schools Designation. Bush Elementary submitted ten points to qualify as Michigan Green School and therefore be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive go on record recognizing the hard work and commitment to promote sound environmental stewardship and energy conservation shown by Auburn Area Catholic Schools, Bayernet ISD Career Center, John Glenn High School, State Street Academy, Banger Lincoln Elementary School, Banger Central Elementary School, in achieving their Evergreen Level Michigan School Designation, to Bayernet Community High School achieving their Emerald Level, and to Bush Elementary School for qualifying as a Michigan Green School. Congratulations. Sign Michael Durant check chair and board.
Okay, if we could have the recipients, please come forward. He already got to sit in the big chair and we had pictures taken beforehand, didn't we, James? And James said that, well, I just want to show you that I recycle. So he had a piece of paper here with his name on it even, which is just fantastic. You know, that young, that's great. And I'd like to thank Alicia Wallace and of course, all of the schools involved in the program, as well as the excellent dedicated staff and of course, all the students who helped make this day possible and moving forward into the 21st century, reminding everyone how important our environment and our natural resources are. And it just happens to be coincidental that we have, we'll be hearing from her in a little bit, about Lisa Williams from the U.S., Dr. Lisa Williams from the Fish and Wildlife Service here today. So she knows of our commitment to the environment and preserving our natural resources and our younger generation that's going to carry this, you know, effort forward in the years ahead. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Yep, you're welcome. And James, you did a good job up there when you were playing chairman with the gavel. So a good job. We'll see you in a few years, all right? Thank you. Thank you all. 911, Resolution 2019-64. I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Mr. Welton, front and center. I'm going to have the clerk read the resolution here while you're coming up.
Resolution 2019-64 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, in the early evening hours of December 7, 2018, the Bay County Sheriff's Office responded to a suspicious death, later determined a homicide in Auburn, Michigan. And whereas, upon arrival, sheriff's personnel observed a female lying on the floor with apparent gunshot wounds. And whereas, with the assistance of the Michigan State Police and medical personnel, the scene was quickly secured and surrounding community was safe. Whereas, the diligent work and extra efforts of Supervisor Jeff Wheaton from Bay County Central Dispatch in handling this call was instrumental in assisting the deputies and medical personnel in doing what was necessary at the scene of this horrific tragedy. And whereas, the professionalism, commitment, and dedication shown by Jeff Welton and the over-the-top performance of his duties should be acknowledged and commended. And whereas, as a dispatcher, Jeff Welton plays a critical role in ensuring the quality of life and safety of Bay County residents on a daily basis. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive, on behalf of Bay County, take this opportunity to recognize Jeff Welton for his professionalism and excellent job performance under such spary stressful circumstances. Sign Michael Durant check chair and board.
Well, this is, it was brought to my attention from Chris and also from the sheriff about, you know, doing your job, but this is above and beyond kind of like your job. So thank you for keeping everybody safe and everything. Chris, would you like to?
Sure, I've got a couple of words.
I'd ring your view one.
A couple of things out just so I didn't forget. But quite often when I come here, we focus on technology and the new things in 911. But I think this call and this proclamation reminds us that without professionals like Jeff, all of that technology really doesn't mean anything. It's the person behind the chair who makes all of that go, all of that intelligence, professionalism, nearly twenty years of experience. Jeff has made this all possible. So we need to really think about that. It's the person behind that technology that makes it go. I always think about when we have new employees and the new employee will say, well, when I sat with the dispatcher, they made it look so easy. And now that I'm behind the chair, boy, this is really a lot harder than they made it look. And that's because we take eighty thousand 911 calls a year, eighty thousand administrative calls. It's a hundred and sixty thousand times to get better at your craft. So when there's a call for a medical, they think Jeff's a paramedic. When there's a structure fire, they think Jeff is a firefighter. When there is some sort of call for police, he's an officer, but he's not. He's a dedicated 911 professional. So that new employees, right, Jeff makes it look easy, but it's a dang hard job. So really appreciate all the work that Jeff and his team did on this call and eighty thousand other calls.
Going to have Mr. Barsha, who is never short for words, give us a...
Congratulations, Jeff. You're a true hero to our people in Bay County as the rest of the staff are at 9/11 Central Dispatch. And Chris, thank you for what Jeff and the entire team, including yourself and everyone else, do on behalf of our residents of Bay County, keeping us safe. And whether it's a natural disaster or whether it's a, you know, a criminal matter or a fire, whatever it is, you're there. And with our smart 911, we're really on the cutting edge, I guess, in technology in the whole state and throughout the Midwest. So thank you, Chris, and Jeff, very proud of you. Keep up the great work, along with you and your peers at Central Dispatch.
It's kind of ironic that today about being on the cutting edge, we had, we, Mr. Barsha and myself went out for lunch and we happened to see Chris there. And here's Midland and Saginaw and everybody, they're all picking his brain. So good job. Again, thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff. Next on the agenda, we have Public Health Week in Bay County, April 8th through the 12th, Resolution Number 2019-65. I'll entertain a motion.
Someone? Support.
We have motion of support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Madam Clerk, would you please read?
Resolution 2019-65 by the Bay County Board of Commissioners. Whereas, promoting health and quality of life of all Bay County residents through prevention is a major goal of public health. And whereas, public health services benefit Bay County's entire population and are essential ingredients of a strong, successful healthcare system. Whereas, public health activities protect our citizens from infectious diseases, environmental hazards, chronic diseases, unintentional injuries, violence. And whereas, public health professionals and others who promote public health play important roles in providing for the health and welfare of our county. Whereas, there can be no community improvement efforts without the support of a strong public health infrastructure. And whereas, the current nationwide celebration of Public Health Week 2019, for science, for action, and for health, will increase awareness and understanding of the relationship between prevention and health outcomes in our community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners and the Bay County Executive do hereby proclaim April 8th through 12th, 2019, as Public Health Week in Bay County, urging all private organizations and educational institutions to join with Bay County Health Department to celebrate with activities to promote health and acknowledge the many benefits of public health to the citizens of Bay County. Sign Michael Durant check chair and board.
Thank you. Joel and staff, you guys aren't going to just sit there in a chair. You want everybody, all of a sudden, come on. Mark, yeah, let me do it. On behalf of the Bay County Board of Commissioners, thank you for a job well done. As I went to the open house today and that they had at the Health Department, and we're one of the few counties that no, knock on wood, no hepatitis A is it, and no measles here. And so their education is doing good. We just need to get out there with a little bit more of the immunizations and stuff for people. On behalf of myself and...
I just want to reiterate what the chairman said, how proud we are of all that you do in the Bay County Health Department, each and every staff member there, keeping us in the forefront on a variety of fronts, right, Joel? Mr. Director, you highlighted some of those at the open house today earlier. But whether it's the mapping of all of our septic fields and that's impact on our environment and our water quality in this region of the state, to our, the Bay Community Health Clinic, which just received a director's award for your innovation and quality service provided to our less than adequately insured residents in Bay County for healthcare, to so many things that you're doing that time won't allow us to cover today. But we're blessed in Bay County to have a health department such as we have with the dedication of each and every one of you and the vision of the leadership in our health department. So thank you, and this is a small token of the esteem and appreciation the Bay County Board and all the Bay County government have for the job that you do each and every day.
Thanks. we supposed to do?
Yes.
Dr. Williams?
I'm going to have, at this time, I'm going to have Mr. Barsha introduce our next speaker. Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say it has been a pleasure for me to know and be acquainted with Lisa Williams and her work as the branch chief of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And she was... And she was very kind to come up today to discuss the implications of, I guess, how the council, the trustees award damage settlements as a result of PCVs on the middle grounds or the dioxins in the Tidobosse River, Saginaw River, and Saginaw Bay, and the impact that's had on our environment. And Laura and I had talked earlier, along with some other stakeholders at the township level, about the impact that acquiring more and more land be held in public trust and taking it off the tax rolls, what kind of impact that has on our ability to provide quality services to all Bay County residents. And as you can see in Kelly Riffenbach's excellent presentation on our assessed valuation for 2019, I think we had just a .3% increase. Even though we have a lot of housing, new housing that's being built in Frankenlust and Williams Townships and Bangor, Hampton Township as well, we still see a decline in the overall collection of property tax revenue, which we are dependent upon, along with grants, to provide the services Bay County residents and taxpayers expect from their Bay County government. So, with that, I ask, and I think Laura Ogar has a presentation perhaps after Dr. Williams' comments, we want to thank you, Lisa, for your generous time today and the travel that you engaged in to get here for our board meeting, as well as the meeting that we had at 3:00. So, thank you.
Thank you. I work for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Our office is down in East Lansing. I've been working on contaminants issues in Saginaw Bay and also the Calamazoo River in Detroit and other lovely places in Michigan. Lovely in one sense, but with a legacy of contamination in another sense, since the early '90s. And one of the things that I do on my job, working with the state and with tribal agencies, is look at impacts of pollution to fish and wildlife and their habitats. And we have some authorities under national law, and there are some authorities under state law as well, that allow us to look at the amount of damages that have occurred over time to those resources because of the release of hazardous substances, and look at what it would take to provide benefits to those fish and wildlife and habitats to compensate, because these are the public's resources that have been harmed by these contaminants. And it's not enough just to clean it up now, after there've been decades of losses. And so, in 1998, '99, we reached a settlement with General Motors that provided for dredging in the river, that provided for preservation of public lands, that created the Golson Boat Launch and Nature Park area, the Cass River Boat Launch area, the Jones Road Boat Area, preserved Little Charity and Big Charity Island, and provided some additional funding for monitoring over time and for additional restoration in the future, because we had some money left over from some of those projects, because we had the monitoring money that we didn't need to spend all that we thought we would, because Dow was then required to do a bunch of the monitoring in this watershed, so we didn't have to do it. So, now, we have an opportunity to put over $5 million on the ground again as a follow-up to that settlement. And I came up here today to talk to township supervisors and county commissioners and the executive about hearing what some of the interests and concerns are in this area as we develop some alternatives for ways that we might spend that money, whether it means putting more investment on the projects that we started years ago, or looking for new projects. And I think we had a great talk this afternoon. Laura's going to talk now about some of the fiscal impacts of what it means when you take land out of private into public, right?
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Julie Coppins, too. Oh, she left. But, um, yeah. Thank you very much. And Jim is absolutely spot on. We are so fortunate that Dr. Williams is our lead federal trustee for these environmental damage restoration activities and has been for the past 30, 20-something, 20-something years. It's just because these are, these are very, very complex settlements. A lot of negotiations that go on, a lot of dug-in positions, and so, we've been very fortunate to have Lisa and her staff and the other, our other fellow trustees, the tribe, DEQ as well, because we have benefited. And now, as Lisa described, a lot of the natural resources, the fish and wildlife resources that we have here, the work that's gone on over the past 20 years to help restore those habitat in particular, I have very, I have five brief slides I just want to talk about, about while all the good, good work that's gone in to restore that habitat, protect that habitat, preserve it, we've taken properties that have been purchased using restoration funds. These are private properties that have now been purchased using, you know, as a public agency have purchased these. Some of them combined, like for Tobaco Marsh, Nyancoin Point, Hampton, Hampton Frontage, as well as Quantica Sea. I want to kind of talk about, for every action, there's a reaction, right? We know that. There are some fiscal impacts that we've experienced here in Bay County during the course of this natural resources preservation. And so, when we take, for example, a private parcel that maybe is wetlands, you know, in order for it to have good natural resource habitat values, it's typically along the waterfront or it's got wetlands on it, I've developed this kind of this hypothetical 100 acres presentation to talk about what are those financial local impacts. So, it's typically, you know, it's a larger parcel that people are looking at for habitat values. It's undeveloped. It's got, again, wetlands or waterfront, and it's adjacent to other parcels of similar characteristics. That helps build that footprint for natural movement of the wildlife values, wildlife resources. This is, I developed a kind of a composite, a generic township, a generic 100-acre parcel that has, you know, a taxable value. And this is a composite. And so, in Bay County, a generic 100-acre parcel with those characteristics, waterfront wetlands, has a value of about $195,000. If you take that, that parcel, in annual taxes, property taxes, it pays about $7,300 a year in property tax. Now, this, this lists right here those services that are paid for out of that property tax. Some people call it paying taxes. On the other side of the table is kind of our revenues, right? That's what we base our budgets on. We just heard about 911 and about the heroic work and the multitude of variety of work that they're dealing with. That, that gets paid for out of this, there's a certain sliver of that $7,300 in property tax that gets paid for. 911, our county veterans, medical care, senior citizens gets a small portion of that. Certainly, our county operating budget as a separate sliver of that. Some of that goes for state education, but it also includes, you know, Bay Metro, public safety, police and fires, you know, under that heading, one heading. But also then township operating costs get paid for out of that. So, so that $7,300 serves a lot of different services. It provides, goes towards providing those services. Now, when a private parcel, a tax-paying parcel, taxable parcel, is purchased either by a public entity or a nonprofit, it becomes tax-exempt. And so, there is no longer those property taxes that are paid. And again, it's those same services that are impacted. Bay County has a tremendous amount of wetlands. This is actually a slide from the DEQ Wetlands Mapper database. Any of the yellow, orange, or the green is wetlands or waterfront property. So, you can see, in the state of Michigan, if we were to enlarge the full screen of the state of Michigan, this area, Bay County in particular, as well as Tuscaloosa, is distinct for the acreage of wetlands that we have. So, currently, below our 585 contour line, which is a very narrow strip along the Saginaw River, as well as along our, the Bay coastal area, we have over 10,000 acres that are publicly owned, set aside specifically for wildlife habitat. Those, and again, Nyancoin Point, Tobaco, and the Bay City State Park, there's properties up by Shioasi, there's Quantica Sea, in addition to other parcels along the river and the shoreline. Those parcels have a total taxable value of almost $17 million. That's the annual taxable value. If they were to be held in private ownership, that's the value they would have. And they would be paying $740,000 in property tax, which are now exempt. So, in conclusion, you know, we have, our abundant natural resources have provided for this area for a long time, our forest areas, our fish, our coal resources, you know, and in our quest to restore some of the damages from our industrial activities, our historic industrial activities, we need to look at some of the local contributions that we are, we've made, that we, that go towards our support towards that restoration. And really, the question is, you know, do we need more lands for, set aside for natural resources as exempt? Or do we need, you know, is there, is, can we help restore the natural resources if more human connectivity and more access to those resources exist? So, that is my, thank you very much.
I would like to take this time to thank Dr. Williams for the earlier meeting and for coming and making a presentation for the board. It was really enlightening, and we have a little fondness for Fish and Wildlife, because I believe, if I'm not correct, I mean, that's where our very first flag might have came from, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Fish and Wildlife Service and Shioasi Partners, Michelle, later on.
Yep, yep. So, I mean, so we got a little fondness there, so maybe you can, when you have your public hearings and stuff, I'm sure we'll be in attendance or whatever. So, thank you once again. Laura, thank you. Good job. Yep.
Priming sample, that is already occurring, Conso Power. They knocked that one building down, now Hampton and all the county villages took a hit. And they plan on knocking the other one down. I doubt they'll keep ownership of that, so that's going to be a big hit.
Okay. Thank you once again. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Support.
Motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item C, 2018 Annual Report from the Drain Commissioner. Motion received.
Support.
We have motion, motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Bay County Clerk, 2018 Annual Report. Motion to receive is in order.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Reports and Resolutions of Committees. Commissioner Harri, Chairman, Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring forward Resolution Number 2019-66, Agreement for School Resources Officer for Pin County Area Schools. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-67, Agreement for Schools, School Resource Officer for Bay City Public Schools. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-68, Agreement for Schools Resource Officer for Bangor Township and Bangor Township Schools. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-69, Grant Funding for Treatment Court Services. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-70, Disco Year 2020 Grant Funding. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-71, Clear Services. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-72, Golf Course Fairway Mar. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion, motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-73, Acceptance of 2019 County Veteran Fund Grant. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-74, Animal Control Contractual Employee Through 1231, 2019. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-75, Local Public Health Opioid Grant. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-76, Amendment Number Three to the CPBC Agreement. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution 2019-77, Vanguard Intercom Security System for Center Ridge Arms. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-78, 2019 Bay County Equalization. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-79, Payables General. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-80, Voluntary Employees Beneficiary Association Corrective Action Plan for the General Group, Sheriff's Group, and Medical Care Facility. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-81, Budget Adjustments. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution Number 2019-82, Waste Removal and Recycling Services, RFP. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, that is all from the Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chairman Tom Ryder, Personnel and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Resolution 2019-83, Purchase of Military Service Credit for Retirement Pensions for Dean Trico. I will move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution 2019-84, Software License and Agreement. I will move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution 2019-85, Medical Marijuana Grant. I will move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution 2019-86, Agreement with SVSU for Clinical Services. I will move this resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Resolution 2019-87, Vagacys and the Sheriff's Office, 911 Central Dispatch, and Department on Aging and Juvenile. I will move this resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
That's all we have before today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. From the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I bring Resolution 2019-88...
Today I bring Resolution 2019-88, which is the opposition to funding cuts to the Great Lakes Restored Restoration Initiative. I move that resolution.
Support.
We have motion and support. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Commissioner. Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, discussion.
I think that's a good piece of legislation to bring forward, but going forward, as they put together the budget for, on the federal budget, we should as well have a resolution to show our, show the fact that these, the putting, the cutting education, and specifically special ed. So going forward, as they go with the federal budget, we should come forward, maybe I'll bring something forward, opposing any cuts to education and any cuts to special ed as well. So, this, we got plenty of time, so maybe next month, what we will do is, is just bring that forward and educate as many people as we can on, on that federal budget. Thank you.
Great idea. Any other discussion? Did we vote on that already? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I bring Resolution 2019-89, so we took reports of the County Executive for a month tomorrow. I move that resolution.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
That's all I have from the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. Reports of the county officials. County Executive, Mr. Jim Barsha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, since I've spoken quite a bit at this meeting, I'd like to defer to Amber Johnson, our Corporation Counsel. She has an announcement to make and a person that just joined the staff in the Corporation Counsel's office, and so I'll defer to Amber.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would like to introduce Heather Brady-Pitcher to the Board. Heather is the person who came in as Assistant Corporation Counsel, replacing Shawna Walreman. I know that some of you have introduced yourself to Heather, but for those of you who haven't had a chance, Heather was born and raised in Bay City. She got her bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University, and her Juris Doctor from John Marshall Law School in Chicago. Following some years in private practice, she worked for a number of years, over a decade over with our courts, first for Chief Judge Schmidt, and then for Judge Sheeran as a staff attorney. And she is carrying on a tradition in Bay County. Her father also used to work in the Department of Corporation Counsel back in the day as well. But we're kind of getting her a crash course and everything, since she's come on. I want everybody to have a face to go and a voice and behind the email when you're talking to her, but I think she's going to be great, and we're all jealous of her office because she brought her own two of its parents. Thank you, Amber.
Yep, welcome. Yeah, I think last, maybe last week when I was in there, there was no furniture, and I went by today and it goes, wow, nice classy furniture.
Nice, right, yeah.
Nice, nice, nice job in the office, and welcome to Bay County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else there, Mr. Barsha?
No, I just say that Pat Brady, who is probably a friend to many of us in the room or the older members in the room here, would be very proud, Heather, that you're carrying down that legacy in the legal profession, and I remember fondly your dad and all he did in Bay County, in the courts and as an attorney. Thanks.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? New business? Miscellaneous?
Just along the court thing, I've been reading, the state is looking at the way of funding courts, we're possibly changing it, it might be better for county. Before, you know, the courts lived a lot off of the fines and I believe they have said, so, so basically the judges were living off the money they had, they find that people are trying to find a different way of funding it. So, and it looks like it would be more state funding than county funding. So, we'd be encouraged to push that along if we can, if we can, though Mac, Mac is working on it already, trying to push it forward.
It's nice having you on the Board.
Yeah. Keep personal.
Thank you for what you do. Any other announcements? Appointments in June, Library Board, one five-year term. October, Land Bank Authority, one three-year term. Department of Health and Human Services, Board of Directors, we have one three-year term. Board of Camisters, two four-year terms. This appointments are made from lists submitted by the major political parties. In November, Building Authority, two six-year terms. December, Department on Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms in Districts 1, 3, 5, and 7. Any need for a closed session, madam?
No, there is not.
Thank you.
Motion due adjourned.
Always in order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried.